We're going to call this meeting of the Oceanside City Council to order, and we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Keim. Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
And Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here. And at this time, I'd like to invite Charlotte Keim down to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[56.71][56.71](applause)
And at this time, I would invite the city clerk and Councilmember Keim to come forward for his ceremonial swearing. I guess the official one already occurred.
Just repeat after me. I, Ryan Keim.
Ryan Keim.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will valiant faithfully discharge the duties of the office of a member of the City Council of the City of Oceanside according to the best of my ability.
Good work.
First of all, I just want to say how thankful I am for this opportunity. I understand how important it is, and the amount of support I've received in the last two weeks has been phenomenal from the community, from my friends and family, my daughter Charlotte, who did the Pledge of Allegiance, and my wife. It's been amazing. I think sometimes it's overlooked is the amount of work that city staff has also done, so I want to thank the city manager and the city attorney for helping get me up to speed in these last couple of weeks. They've actually, they've done a truly tremendous job in familiarizing me with all the important issues that are in come ahead at the council. So, thank you so much.[181.37][181.37](applause) As an almost lifelong resident of Oceanside, I have never been more optimistic about the state of the city as I am right now. I think our crime is at historic lows. Our relationships with community groups and the police have never been better, and I think every day out on the street, you feel safer and safer, and I hope everyone else sees that as well. I've never been more optimistic about that. Also, as you drive through the city, whether it's downtown or out east, you see new businesses thriving, and so many of these businesses are owned by Oceanside locals and residents, and they're doing so well, and it's just, it's a boon for the entire city. I'm so excited to be part of the city government while that's happening. You know, also, we're going to have challenges in the next couple of years. I think we have a regional homeless crisis that is going to take a regional solution, and I don't think it's something we can fix overnight, but it's important, and we need to start addressing it immediately. Also, as we grow, I think it's important that we need to address our growth and make sure that we keep our quality of life and are able to pay for the services that the residents of Oceanside deserve. So, I think with these challenges, we are in a very unique position on the City Council right now. We have five council members that truly care about their communities and really want the best for them, and I'm excited to work with them. I think for any small differences we may have, we have much more in common. I think we're really going to be able to do great things in the next couple of years. So, I want to say thank you for the warm welcome, and I look forward to serving you.[274.72][274.72](applause) Again, thank you so much for the warm welcome, and I'm so happy to be here, and I want to thank my wife and daughter, and they've just done an amazing job. So, thank you so much.[312.33][312.33](applause)
Mr. Mullin?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the City Council met earlier in closed session to discuss the status of negotiations with the Oceanside Police Officers Association. There is no reportable action under the Brown Act, and that was the only matter that was discussed.
Thank you. Consent calendar?
Next, we have a consent calendar, and item number eight was polled by the public.
Councilmember? I'll second. Please vote.
For Keim. Motion passes, five oh.
Let's go to item eight. David, we'll hear from the public first.
Actually, can we hear from the presentation? Because I think the public may have questions about the presentation.
The consent calendar item, so I'm not sure there was a formal presentation, but if you want to make a few comments, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to pull it, too.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, David Toshack, Senior Civil Engineer, Development Services Department. Staff is recommending the approval of Amendment One to the Professional Services Agreement with NV5 for boundary surveying services to determine the right-of-way for the Melrose Gap project. The Melrose Gap project was re-initiated through the fiscal year 1819 Capital Improvement Program per the City Council direction received at a budget workshop held in April 2018. The Melrose Gap project was formerly referred to as the Melrose Drive Extension and the Melrose Drive Link projects, and is located from Sagewood Drive north to Seattle Slough Way. Construction, the missing portion of Melrose Drive will close a 3,700-foot gap between the two intersections of North Santa Fe and Spur Avenue. Planning for the process, the planning process for the project began in the early 1990s, and the final EIR was completed and certified in 2010. The road segment is included in the City of Oceanside's General Plan Circulation Element and the County of San Diego General Plan. The NV5 Value-Engineered Design was near 100% complete in 2015. The exhibit on the overhead is the Value-Engineered Strategy II designed based on the final EIR Alternative A. The phase approach to re-initiate the project was discussed at the 2018 Budget Workshop. This current phase is to determine the right-of-way. NV5 is currently performing boundary surveys for the right-of-way under their current 2018 On-Call Professional Services Agreement. Approval of this proposed amendment will provide for the surveying services along the entire limits of the Gap project. Thank you. That's my completion of my presentation. I'll be at the sideboard.
The first speaker is Thomas David, followed by Yvonne O'Briet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Tom David Heatherwood Drive in Oceanside. Congratulations on your appointment. Up north in Hollywood, tent pole movies are a popular trend. They anchor property, those are anchor properties designed to spawn a series of sequels. Maybe the original film is worthy, but more often than not, one is left wondering, why would they make a sequel to that lousy movie? The answer is usually obvious: it's money. Like another ill-advised sequel to a questionable original, the Oceanside City Council has designed to produce, I didn't catch all the names, I'm calling it Melrose Extension: The Resurrection, the latest franchise entry in a highly controversial and ultimately shelved original concept dating back to the early 90s. City residents most recently expressed clear opposition to this project almost a decade ago, and in an informal, excuse me, online poll of the extension project conducted just this month by a member of this very council, 46% of the respondents were strongly opposed, with only 35% in strong support. It begs the question, why has the Melrose Extension been resurrected? And why now, after it was seen as a dud in the past and no one in the present is begging for this sequel? The answer also seems obvious, and it sits just across the river. The agenda item proposes up to $170,000 for survey work on a project that will seize private and public property, will not appreciably improve emergency response times, but is vital to the development of vast swathes of open space, is inconsistent with the city's own land use policies, at its low estimates will cost $42 million and counting, money that the city's own staff admits we don't have and has no idea where that money will come from, and perhaps worst of all, will reopen divisive wounds that have yet to fully heal. All this while the area affected is without direct district council representation until after the 2020 election. Again, the motivation for the timing seems obvious. By placing this item on its consent calendar, the council seems to be signaling the project is already green-lighted, that it considers this a routine matter worthy of no more discussion than just collective assent, that there is universal agreement on proceeding, the council could not be more in error. The actors have changed, new faces have emerged, but this sequel script reprises roles from the original and every subsequent sequel since: homeowners, landowners, business owners, developers, commuters, and residents. If they choose to do so, each will speak their lines and make their decisions as the script plays out. As the director and producer, the City Council will then include, ignore, or altogether cut these parts as the city is wont to do, but there is one large role whose lines will not be cut and whose interests will not be ignored by this council: that of Gwahomi Regional Park. My intention is to be among the voices speaking that role, and my intention is that our collective voices will be heard. Expect us.
The next speaker is Yvonne O'Briet. And Philip?
My name's Yvonne O'Bright. I live at 5337 here on Court, Oceanside. Congratulations to Ryan Keim. I was one of your team moms.[822.24][822.24](laughing) I was talking to Rom earlier. Anyway, I also wanted to thank Councilman Rodriguez for posting the Melrose survey on social media. It gave us a heads-up that this was happening. So, it gave us a time to research, ponder, and think about what this would mean to our community. We wouldn't have the opportunity otherwise. However, after a good deal of research, I have the following concerns in regard to the resurrection of this project. First, the city lacks $36 million to complete the project. It seems fiscally irresponsible to spend $6 million on a project that may not be funded to completion. Second, the traffic on the Melrose Link will tie into the clogged artery of Highway 76 and add to the clog. The traffic on the Melrose Link will not be alleviated. It's documented that Caltrans intends for Highway 76 to remain four lanes. It does not, the Melrose Link does not extend across the San Luis Rey River, thank goodness, but for it to alleviate any traffic on College, or Vandergrift, or Douglas, it would need to do so. Third, this ineffective road is environmentally unsound. Wetlands and endangered species habitat will be destroyed. The city's value-engineered conceptual plan is the least environmentally sound approach. Noise levels will be unavoidably raised, and the pastoral landscape will be devastated. Finally, there are several properties that will be taken, and other property values will be lowered if the Melrose Link is completed. In closing, I must reiterate that I'm concerned about the fiscally unsound plan of the Melrose Link that will provide little traffic relief. The once peaceful lives, homes, and businesses will be adversely affected, all for an ineffective project. This has already been turned down several times. This is a bad idea then, and a bad idea now. Thank you.[974.60][974.60](applause)
Philip O'Bright?
Philip O'Bright, 5337 here on Court. I'm here for the Melrose Link. Thank you, council. Since this project is supposed to alleviate traffic problem, I would like to paint a picture of the regional traffic pattern and the part Melrose Link would play. This is a commute issue. It begins with Interstate 15 being plugged from Rancho Bernardo Escandito up to Highway 76, up over the hill to Temecula and beyond. East Vista Way creeping along with commuters turning onto Gopher Canyon Road, then up to 76, trying to get to Interstate 15 to head north. Interstate 5 is bringing commuters up from San Diego and down from Southern Orange County to Highway 76 to get in line to go from signal light to signal light, picking up more commuters, filtering in on your way to College Boulevard to join the crowd from Camp Pendleton. Rolling along to North Santa Fe, gathering yet more commuters on the way to merge with East Vista Way, commuters on their way to Interstate 15 to head north. All the main highway arteries are full during commute. We can add all the secondary roads we'd like to converge with Highway 76 artery. If the artery is full, it's full. Adding the Melrose Link intersection at Highway 76 is just cutting in line, adding to an already backed-up situation, allowing some people to get home a few minutes earlier and other people a few minutes later. It's a zero net gain. I live at Melrose and North Santa Fe, and when the commute is over, traffic is actually light, and it is light on the weekends. It's a commute issue. Now, for the emergency egress and regress of Jeffrey's Ranch and other properties, simple access roads with chained pipe gates at strategic locations can be opened for any emergency, mandatory evacuation, fire season, et cetera. It would also give fire and police officers another valuable option in all situations, effective at a reasonable cost.
Next, we have Richard Burton.
I'm Richard Burton, address 1655 Arabian Way in Oceanside. I represent for no one other than myself. I'm a homeowner, taxpayer, and registered voter. Mayor Weiss, Deputy Mayor Feller, City Council members assembled. Good evening, my friends. Congratulations to Members Sanchez, Rodriguez, and Keim. That's good. You guys all look great. I'm glad to see you here. I'm glad you're in charge. I have confidence. But, oh, and I would also add, your constituents and peers have done well in forming this council. I think it's well shaped. But, I want to say this: I urge you to not expend additional taxpayer funds that are now in your keep upon the Melrose Gap project at this time. The city does not have the resources to pursue the Melrose Gap project. There is no federal funding available to secure $42 million cost, according to the City Development Services Engineers. This according to their memo from January 9th. Let us now consider the published city budget. The general fund fiscal year 1819 is projected city revenues of $152.86 million. The budget document, whoops, there's a page, pardon me. The projected expenditures are $151.74. There's not much left over from 152 to 151. The budget document, which is published in that list, the budget list, is a 20-point list of projects for the Capital Improvement Program for 1819 fiscal year. It's $108.8 million. The Melrose Gap project is the last item on that list. I humbly suggest that you leave it there to die peacefully. Let it die peacefully. It's too much trouble coming up if you pursue it vigorously. It costs too much. Find a better way. Do not waste our money.
Next, I have Doreen.
Doreen, no, long time no see.
I know, Melrose, 10 years ago.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Doreen Statlander. I live at 1544 Belmont Park Road, and I'm here tonight to request the council provide no further funding for the Melrose Project Gap link, whatever you're calling it today. In the memo that recently came out from the civil engineer, we're looking at a $42 million project, which will provide little to no traffic benefit. And I will refer the council to go back and read the technical appendices to the EIR, and the traffic analysis states, and I'll refer you to Table 8-2. If you look at that, of the 33 segments analyzed, 25 segments show no change in level of service when you compare the no-project alternative with the proposed Melrose Gap. Six segments would function at a level of service of C or better with or without the proposed project. Only two segments along State Route 76 are predicted to show a decrease in level of service from C to D under the no-project alternative. There is absolutely no justification to be spending $42 million on a project that provides no real benefit. I believe there are other priorities in the city in terms of traffic or other local alternatives that could be done to alleviate some other problems. So, again, I implore that the council go back and look at the technical appendices, look at the cost, and that is a minimum cost, the 42 million, and really assess whether this, what this is going to do for our community. Because as you've heard from the previous speakers, what we're seeing are impacts to properties, businesses, regional parks, community, for very little benefit. So, again, I request that the council provide no further funding for this project.
Next speaker is Leslie Brooks, followed by Merritt Nash.
Long time no see, too.[1448.44][1448.44](laughing)
Good evening, everyone. Mayor and councilmember, city manager, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the topic of the Melrose Gap. After years of on again, off again, and at last count to be completely taken off the circulation element, we are very surprised that the Melrose Extension is, as it was called in the past, is on again. We all know that traffic is an issue in our region. We also know that the purpose of the Melrose Gap roadway is to be a pass-through for commuter traffic from Melrose Drive to North Santa Fe and North Santa Fe to the 76, and ultimately to be the connection for a bridge over the San Luis Rey River. There is an alternative that has the potential to improve the situation immensely, and I'm very excited to share it with you. In fact, just today, neighbor Bob Nelson posted the very same idea on Next Door, and that is to extend North Santa Fe Avenue, already an arterial roadway, to North River Road. The intersection at North River Road is close to Stallion Drive, Melba Bishop Park to the west, and North River Farms to the east. Most of the parcels are public land, and a small portion is on the North River Farms property. There would be very little disturbance to existing agriculture. There are not any residential or commercial properties that would need to be condemned under eminent domain. The $4.5 million that North River Farms is to spend on widening the college bridge would go towards the cost of this, of this road and bridge. Traffic on Vandergrift would be noticeably reduced, and there also would be far less westbound traffic at North Santa Fe and the 76. This alternative offers much better traffic flow for many more Oceanside residents. The current project offers stoplights at Rancho Rose, Old Ranch Road, Spur Avenue, and possibly Gwahomi Lake Road and North Santa Fe. There is no flow, just a lot of waiting. The alternative has far less impacts to the neighborhood of Jeffrey's Ranch, Park Lake, Gwahomi, and Gwahomi Park. The Melrose Gap project is estimated to cost $44 million, up from the $32 million, plus a few more million to acquire residences and businesses, and does not provide a bridge. I am praying that you will see the benefit of North Santa Fe, North River Road. It is much more fiscally responsible and is better overall for the citizens of Oceanside whom you were elected to serve respectfully.[1625.04][1625.04](applause)
Merritt Nash? Followed by Daniel Burke.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and I want to thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for posting those bits of information on our Next Door Neighbors website so that it can be learned of this recently reemerging issue of the soon-to-be-called North Santa Fe to North River Road, as opposed to Melrose Extension. But, in the integrity of why I came here 14 years ago, and I've been a resident at 1656 Appaloosa for that amount of time, I've seen Jeffrey's Ranch Road be closed and the supposed burden of traffic being reduced by 76 Extension. Working at Polo Casino for the entire time that that was progressing, there has not been an increase from this regular commuter in times of heavy traffic during the commuter times. But, I want to be recognized for opposing this Melrose Extension. Let's have a look at North Santa Fe to North River Roads, but have a little bit more dialogue and have those at ground zero, as I may be seen. Voices heard, and we can have a common solution. Thank you very much.[1718.08][1718.08](applause)
Good evening, honorable mayor, respected council, and interested members of the public. My name is Daniel Burke. I live on Glenview Lane, and I am proposing no funding for this survey. The survey, I think, will have difficulty in measuring and determining the impact that this road will have on what has been known for decades, but not for decades, not for the most recent decades, as the Old Indian Trail. If you look at the maps of this area from 100, 150 years ago, the road now named Gwahomi Lake Road was known as the Old Indian Trail, because in truth and fact, it was the Old Indian Trail. This road is going to cut across that Old Indian Trail. The bulk of that Old Indian Trail is still a dirt road. How the Native Americans address that or feel about that, I haven't heard, but I think that an inquiry should be made and that the survey should pay particular attention attention to the integrity of probably the last remaining dirt road with historic significance in the city of Oceanside, the Old Indian Trail, now known as Guahomi Lake Road. The next survey, which causes me concern, and I don't know if a land surveyor is going to be able to ascertain the impact, this area is populated with many raptors. We have falcons, we have hawks, and we have owls. This is their hunting ground, this is their area. If we put in their area a road four lanes wide with lighting and noise, 724, I'd like to know how that's going to impact their nesting and their procreation and their continued existence in this corner of the city. I'd like the survey to somehow address that, if that's possible. Next, I'm concerned about the funding. This funding for 3,700 foot of roadway is going to cost the city, based upon the current estimates, without any overrun, without any excessive expenditures, the $12,000 per foot of roadway. That's what we're talking about spending out there. What is the impact upon the completed road? It feeds not Oceanside, it feeds Vista. It connects 76, which connects 15, which connects Riverside and San Bernardino Counties, to Melrose, which leads right into Vista, doesn't lead into Oceanside. It doesn't lead into Oceanside businesses. There's a portion of residences which may have an easier connection to Route 15, but for the bulk of the traffic, it's going to be feeding Vista businesses, not Oceanside businesses.
Can you wrap it up, please?
I will. Finally, the funding. I'm unaware of what the city coffers have within them, but it always causes me concern when there are underfunded deferred compensation and pension plans. And I think that these kinds of funds are better expended on the people working within it for the city of Oceanside than spent on 3,700 foot of unnecessary road. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Arlene Hammerschmidt and Larry Cornet.
Good evening, council. Arlene Hammerschmidt, Ivory Road in ruralish Fire Mountain. My concern is the way that this was presented on the agenda. If it was worded in this manner for a closed session, it would be alarming because a person interested in this darn near missed it. And if this was in a closed session agenda, it would be considered pretty secretive. So my recommendation, just simply for public knowledge and open consideration, is call it what the public calls it. How many people call it the Melrose Gap? I looked at that and thought about a store to go shopping, not a, you know, capital improvement project. So perhaps we should have Melrose Gap, Melrose Extension slash Melrose Link, because then everybody who's looking for this to come up understands what the heck it is. My second concern is this amount of money has got to suck money for capital improvement projects elsewhere in the city. There's only so much money in the pot. If it all goes there, other neighborhoods are going to go without. And I know for sure that South Oceanside needs some help with the pedestrian crosswalks and some other improvement plans that they have in mind to help businesses on Highway, Coast Highway, Hill Street. So I thank you for your time, just another angle, another view, and I would like to see some more transparent language on our agendas, please. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, Honorable Mayor Larry Cornet, Ranchero Drive, Oceanside. I want to talk about this a little bit differently, and that is that when we're talking about Proposition Y or SOAR, the main argument that I heard is you have no right to tell property owners what they can do with their property. This goes to integrity. You have no right for eminent domain because you are telling property owners what they can do with their property. If you take one piece of land or investigate one piece of land to be taken by eminent domain, your integrity then is in question because it means you feel it's okay here, but it's not okay there. Taking land is taking land. Telling somebody what they can do with their land is telling them what they can do with their land. I supported SOAR for one main reason, and that was because I felt that the environmental impact of anything that could be done would be devastating. I still think the environmental impact of anything being done with what we're calling the Melrose Gap or Melrose Extension can be devastating. You've already heard about the wildlife that can be affected. But there's more to it, and that is if you think that this is going to relieve traffic, you're sorely mistaken. Studies have shown that traffic seeks its own level. The more roads you make, the more cars there'll be for the time that you're looking. What you need to look at is what can we do, working with Sandag, working with North County Transit District, to get some real honest-to-goodness mass transit, to be able to get cars off the road so that people can get to their jobs with less cars on the road and be able to thin those arteries out, to have egress and ingress? We would definitely be able to do bar or gate, and it frustrates me that there are less people here than there were when they put, when they closed Jeffrey's Ranch. There were a ton of people when we faced that first, and there aren't as many, but I'm sure there are as many who are as frustrated as we are today. So I'd like you to consider that if you look at spending one cent on a study, to look at eminent domain, your integrity has to be questioned because you're saying property rights are okay here, but they're not okay there. I expect a uniformed view from the people who represent me. Thank you.
That's it for the, okay, thank you. Okay, I echo some of your comments here. First of all, my biggest concern here is a waste of valuable and finite taxpayer funds, and also concerns about the taking of properties. In the staff report, it talks about four complete parcel takes, about 58 parcels with a combination of right-of-way, rights-of-way, and/or easement takes, and then talking about priorities in the takings, taking properties. I am very, very concerned about this project. That is, it's got old studies, it's got old, very old input, and we ought to be talking about looking at those things and not jumping in terms of spending even more money on a project that's not going to do anything for us. The justification that's been given was initially that level of service, that it's somehow going to improve the level of service, and pretty much now we understand it's so insignificant. So the second thing that they're saying is that, well, the justification, we ought to give Jeffrey's Ranch another outlet. We had another outlet on 76, and unfortunately, staff did not comment on the 76 widening, no comments that Caltrans intended to take out Jeffrey's Ranch Road. So I don't, I don't believe that that is a real reason why we're even doing this. It's not. And if it is, there are a lot of much cheaper alternatives that we had been talking about in finally getting access to 76 and real, real access. My questions to staff, have any of the property owners been contacted regarding land acquisitions? And if so, what's the time period? Staff?
Councilmember Sanchez, councilmembers here. Currently, I believe property management is taking the lead on appraisals at this point. I'm not certain if they've contacted individual owners, but they are in the process of taking appraisals, which they anticipate of those four properties that they'll have appraisals sometime in February.
So that, to the best of your knowledge, none of the property owners have been contacted by staff regarding the taking, potential taking of their properties?
Yes, I'm not certain if any individual staff member in property management has done that.
Okay. Next question. My understanding is that there have been significant changes with respect to environmental requirements, that we're moving away from LOS to a different standard. Does this project need to meet those new state requirements?
Councilmember Sanchez, and mayors and councilmembers, yes, we do have identified in this initial phase of work to go back and revalidate the EIR. So any current study that isn't effective would be evaluated for, say, traffic control or habitat, anything that we would have to do by law school studies for breeding behaviors and any species, endangered species that might be there or are no longer there or currently not there. Just to revalidate the EIR, we would be doing those studies.
So will it be recirculated for a brief period of time to get input from, say, wildlife agencies and the public, and any other agencies that would be involved?
Honorable Mayor and councilmember Sanchez, at this point, we don't anticipate that the EIR would need to be recirculated. Certainly, there are some technical studies that may need to be updated, and it really depends on what the findings of those updated studies demonstrate. Of course, if additional impacts were identified through the update of those studies that had not been identified and mitigated through the original EIR, then there is a potential. If those studies demonstrate that there haven't been a fundamental change in the conditions, then there would be no need to recirculate the document.
Well, what about the new standards moving away from LOS?
It wouldn't be subject, the EIR has been certified, so it wouldn't be subject to those new LOS standards that you're referring to.
To your knowledge, have any of the, of landowners been, homeowners been contacted regarding acquisitions?
As David Toshack just mentioned, Real Property Division is taking the lead on those negotiations. I was under the impression that there have been some discussions ongoing. However, I can't speak with certainty in terms of what particular property owners have been contacted.
Do we have some more information on that?
Yes, ma'am. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, Kyle Coe, Public Works Director. We have, I believe, staff has talked to a couple of the property owners. They have not made any offers yet. Part of the item tonight is to do some acquisition surveys to find out on other properties how much we need to, how much acreage we're looking at so we can get appraisals and make offers.
I understand that you are planning on giving the same day notice for these surveys. Why not give more notice to the property owners regarding this survey? Why same day? I mean, they may not even be home.
Councilmember Sanchez, typically when we do the surveys, or any type of survey service in general, we put the responsibility on the surveyor to contact the individuals. There's a lot of times where they'll do surveys without the homeowners being home. So this is basically boundary surveys are validating that the survey monuments that were, according to the county, are there and valid to where they can actually determine the true boundaries of the property. So that's, that's the purpose of the surveys. The contacting them is, again, is based on the surveyor's schedule, and he can be available to go out there. Should you request, if we want to extend the time to notify residents, we can do that, and we could ask our consultant to give a 72-hour notice instead of a 20-hour.
I think that would be much better, at least let them know what's going on. With respect to the 40, I've heard 44, I've heard 46 million dollars that this project would cost, I know that we have so far, the $6 million came from thoroughfare funding, is that correct?
Yes, councilmember Sanchez, the $6 million, $6.1 million for the 1819 fiscal year was from thoroughfare.
Okay, and how much, what is the total amount of thoroughfare funds that we have?
Councilmember Sanchez, I believe that our current available funds in thoroughfare are approximately 12 to 13 million dollars.
12 to 13, and we're taking about half of that. And that would be for projects throughout the city of Oceanside, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And with respect to another, another potential pocket for money, transnet dollars, this, we're talking about, say, let's just say 46 million dollars. What is the projected total amount of money that we would be able to have from transnet dollars for the city above and beyond the $2 million a year that we use to fix roads?
Councilmember Sanchez and councilmembers, the projections for the transnet are approximately four to five billion dollars a year each year. Basically, that is for the entire program in that we're proposing the budget coming up. So we've identified in the update that we presented on 1/9 of this year, January 9th of 2019, that those funds would be impacted. For all those programs, we would have to take money from those funds to provide for that project, or if there's a bonding opportunity to take money's future projections and bond for the project.
Through Sandag. Sandag would have to agree to that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So 46 million, that's probably a major chunk of that money, is that correct?
Yes, I believe our current projections for the next five years would be a significant portion of that money.
Okay.
And councilmember Sanchez, you have two minutes of your 10 minutes left.
Thank you very much. I do believe that there is really no justification for this project at all. I think we are wasting valuable funds that we could be using for other projects throughout the city, including the Coastal Rail Trail that we have been putting, putting off and putting off. We ought to first have a workshop, too, of this new council. We've got three new council members, you know, here, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Rodriguez, and Mr., and Mr., I see Ryan, I was going to say Mr. Ryan. But we, we have new people, and we have other projects, and we ought to be, together with the community, figuring out what are our true priorities for the city. So I am not going to be able to support this. I feel very strongly that this should remain off the circulation element, and we should, and we ought to be looking at other ways of moving our citizens, not truck cross-traffic for Orange County or for Riverside County, for our residents to be able to get on and off and to be able to get to work at, in a decent way, including figuring out public transportation. So I'm going to vote no on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I am, and have been supportive of the extension of Melrose, as well as opening every road that we can possibly open for the benefit of the citizens. Melrose Extension affects fewer Oceanside residents because it's on the very east end of the city. The, the street, Melrose, at Jeffrey's Ranch, didn't just magically appear because that is a regional arterial that was supposed to start up by the back gate of Camp Pendleton and cross the river, go, go through that area, and that goes back many years. I did a survey 10, over 10 years ago that showed that the Melrose Extension approved by the entire citizenry of Oceanside showed 76% approved the extension, 11% did not. I don't know how many were in whatever survey councilmember Rodriguez had, but it was 500 residents in that survey, taken from all. residents in that survey, taken from all segments of the city. This as well is the, at the same time this was chopped off was the same time they got rid of the exit at Rancho Del Oro in 78, which was really something that could help all the residents as well, because you can see what you have at College and El Camino. The people that would be taking that, yes, they might be out-of-towners, but they're not necessarily using our College Boulevard. They're not using our Rancho Del Oro, El Camino. It changes how they travel, and that's an important thing. Jeffrey's Ranch was built around 40 years ago, pretty close, 38 years ago, something like that. And at one time, there was an exit that you could have gone out the back way out through Pace Setter. The residents in Jeffrey's Ranch turned down a project that would have had another exit out through Spur. That road, the only way out for Jeffrey's Ranch in case of a fire or anything like that, is onto Highway 76. And my recollection is, we heard a lot about the traffic being jammed on Highway 76, completely closed. The only way out for them is that direction at this point. A few from over off of Guami Road, the dirt road, could have gotten out that way to go east or south. But the purpose for opening roads is just that, you need to ease the traffic. Now, not everybody's gonna ride their bike. Everybody in this room probably came here in their car. Cars are here to stay, they're gonna make a difference all the way along as we go forward. And there are many ways to finance this. This is, you know, staff told you about transnet and our thoroughfare fees. We have those in place, but this is, and as far as eminent domain, that's, we're already talking with people, and that's friendly condemnation, if you will. It's not condemnation until they say no, 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 no. And hopefully, we can make that work as we go forward. So I support open roads. I think this has been a, something that should have happened a long time ago. I heard the extension at Santa Fe there at Highway 76, but that affects the neighbors over there off of the President Streets and then cuts right across an entire farming community to get across the river. So these roads that were in place for probably 50 years when they were first starting about the extension, or making 76 a freeway or a, what do we, what do we call it? A traffic jam? But this, you know, until we open roads and make it passable at every intersection that we can come up with, I think it's, I think this is worthy of moving forward with, and so I will move approval.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, everyone from the Jeffrey's Ranch and surrounding communities for coming out. I think Ms. Hammerschmidt, you're from the Fire Mountain Community, thank you guys. When I first came on to council, I sat down with a lot of the department directors and the city manager, and we went over issues and projects that are coming up. I want to be aware so I can prepare my district on issues and items that would concern me if I was in the neighborhoods. And so in that, I realized that the Melrose extension was a top priority for our city. And with that being said, I began moving forward on presenting information, online surveys, so that I can gather the concerns and the questions from the Jeffrey's Ranch and surrounding communities. And I've been given a lot of suggestions, that I went back to the city manager, answered those questions from the department heads, and submitted the answers back. And the reality is, is this project should have been completed many, many years ago at a much lower cost. It's been on the circulation element at a county level, at a city level since the 80s. I sell a lot of real estate in Oceanside, and when you buy in Jeffrey's Ranch, that's something that's disclosed and discussed at time of closing. And many of the owners in Jeffrey's Ranch knew that this was a potential item. With that being said, 10, 12 years ago, when many of you were here and fighting it then, when that council sat and convened and made a decision to vote no, they did not make a decision or effort to look at any projects to move forward on at that point. So this has lingered and has created that much more tension, that much more of a problem for our city. I've heard some suggestions from Councilwoman Sanchez about, you know, we can move forward on this, we can move forward on that. Well, my question is, why wasn't that done 10 years ago? Why are we having this conversation now? Because when I spend hours and hours and hours on researching any projects that could be done in the next 10 to 15 years, there's nothing. There's nothing. And so unless there's a project that we can get done in the next 15 years that could make the impact and the change like this extension, then I'm open, I'm all ears. Let's move on something that we can actually get done in the next 15 years, because if we cannot afford as a city to sit here for another 15 years and allow that traffic to continue to congest. As far as the funding, we have a new council coming now that we just got, and we have 2020 coming. I have a passion and a desire to make Oceanside the most business and development-friendly city in San Diego County. And with that being said, we're gonna make a lot more money for our city, and we're gonna find the money if this project gets approved. This survey is a due diligence item. We need the information in order to make a decision, an informed decision, that we could see where items are. So I fully support this survey, because it's just gonna give us more information to assist with the decision-making process. I plan on having a town hall. It's already been scheduled, I'll be announcing that. And I plan on getting staff to come out and put a presentation together and get everyone in the impacted communities feedback, so we can all be on the same page. But I'm all ears for any project that can do similar benefits that we can get done in the next 15 years, because I've found nothing, and I've spent hours and hours and hours looking. So I'm definitely gonna vote to move for approval on this survey as a part of the due diligence process. Thank you.
Councilmember Keim?
Again, I also want to thank everyone for coming out. And I want to thank everyone for coming out and taking time out of your day to speak to the council. I'll make my comments brief. I am concerned about traffic and the regional traffic plan, not just the Melrose extension, but when you see different segments of the city, roadways disappear or not become developed. And right now, at certain times of the day, certain cities are impassable. But I am concerned about the cost. I share Councilman Rodriguez's optimism about our future and bringing in more revenue. However, it is a lot of money to spend just for the Melrose gap. But at this point, I still would like to move forward and have more information.
Is that a second? Does anyone want to second that motion?
I'd like to second.
Okay, very good. Jack made the motion. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yeah, I think I have one more minute. I voted against this project, Christopher, because it's a bad project. Under current standards, state standards, this is a dinosaur. This is not a way of moving people within Oceanside and even regionally. It is a bad project. There is no significant difference in how traffic is going to move. $46 million, which is almost all of our transnet dollars, on this one project that's gonna be a big failure, is not worth it. The citizens of Oceanside is being taxed for this. The $46 million is, the county is taking that from our money, from our properties. So this is really, really bad project. It is environmentally unsound, and that is why I voted no, and will continue to vote no, because we need to have much better projects for our citizens. Thank you.
I would just like to add, thank you, thank you. I appreciate the applause. I would just like to add and touch on something that Councilmember Keim had said. We have, not just Oceanside, but other cities as well, systematically eliminated significant roadway connections, whether it's Melrose, whether it's the extension of Cannon Road from College in Carlsbad, or Haymar between College and El Camino Real or the RDO interchange. We eliminate these significant roadway connectors, and then we complain that there's traffic congestion. There will be time for, in this particular project, to evaluate whether the project is cost-effective or not. This money is going to do the surveys so that there's an opportunity to see if there is an ability to negotiate the acquisition of the property. We're not voting on the project. There's a long way before that actually happens, and there may be opportunities to look at, are there better projects? Are there other projects that provide traffic relief regionally and locally that money could be used better for? But until that time, I'm willing to move forward with the surveys. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. So we have a 6 o'clock public hearing item?
I believe it's been pulled.
Mayor, that item is going to be pulled at my request. That matter is close to resolution. If it doesn't resolve, then we will be recalendering the public hearing.
Thank you. So if we can move to item 13, please? That is a resolution approving the hiring of Doug Baxter as hourly extra help. Chief?
Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much for your time. I'm here tonight looking for your approval to adopt a resolution to certify and approve hiring of Doug Baxter as an hourly extra help consultant assistant effective January 24th, 2019, in the amount not to exceed $38,000 a year to fill a vacancy critically needed for the position in the Police Department Crimes and Violence Unit. Detective Baxter recently retired from the Police Department. He was our most senior homicide detective in the city. We have a number of cold case homicides that we have not had the opportunity to have staff look at, and by bringing back Detective Baxter, will give us that opportunity to revisit those cold cases with the new technology that has since come forward over the years and hopefully bring some closure to those victims' families. So, further any other questions that you may have, I would like to have your support on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption?
Councilmember Keim?
I've had the chance to work with Detective Baxter, and I think it is a fantastic value for the money. He brings quite a bit of organizational experience.
Is that a second to the motion? Please vote.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Watch your step, chief. 14 will be the five-year forecast. Ms. McPherson, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Jane McPherson, Financial Services Director. I'm here tonight to present the five-year financial forecast. The purpose of this forecast is to identify financial trends, identify changes in expenditures, project the cost of maintaining current service levels, and staff recommends that the city council accept this fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year 2024 general fund forecast. There are assumptions that are used to develop this forecast. It assumes static conditions. The 2018, 19 numbers, the basis was, were used for the 2019, 20 expenditure numbers. The 2019, 20 also includes a 2% increase to maintenance and operations. It does not include any new programs, with the exception of adding operating costs for the El Corazon Pool beginning in fiscal year 21, 22, which is the date of estimated completion. It also includes all known and negotiated personnel costs, as well as placeholders for those yet to be negotiated and outlining years. Includes monies for 12% of our budget expenditures that are required for our healthy city reserves, and all other required funding for restricted funds, for example, workers' compensation and risk management. In addition, it includes all new CalPERS increases based on the July 2018 actuarial report and December 2016 impact of rate increases caused by the lowering of the CalPERS discount rate. Here listed are the CalPERS net new cost increases by year, the total for years 1920 through 24. You can see there is 10.87 million. That's the employer cost. As a percent of compensation, you can see here, the employer cost for the CalPERS in 1819 is, for safety, is 40.89, going up to 53.60% in 23, 24. For miscellaneous group, it's starting at 28.59, for 1819, going to 38.2%. Staff recommends using 1 million out of the 8.1 million in set aside that we have to help fund the 2022, 23 CalPERS unfunded liability to help that year in order to keep a positive balance. Additional CalPERS unfunded liability set aside funds may be needed also in 2023, 24 if new hotels are delayed or there is a downturn in the economy. Here is a summary of the total revenues of 157.82 million, and expenditures, this is for 2019, 20, of 154.95, resulting in a surplus of 2.87 million. Capacity that's gonna be available for the 2019, 20 budget. This net surplus will allow for minor net new ongoing costs and availability for some one-time items. Continue to, we will continue to scrutinize all replacement hiring. We'll continue to have employees pick up a greater portion of retirement costs through the collective bargaining process. We'll decline additional new programs without a corresponding new revenue source, and we'll continue to implement City Council Policies 200-11 and 200-13 to assist in paydown of CalPERS unfunded liability, which is 50% of the year-end surplus and 1/3 of interest earned for each year for the debt reduction. Recommendation, staff recommends that the city council accept the fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year 2024 general fund forecast. Thank you.
Republic?
Do we have one? Diane Nygaard?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Diane Nygaard, Levon Nighthawk Way. This actually paints a pretty rosy picture for the next five years. But of course, if our financial picture was that rosy, we wouldn't have needed a half cent sales tax, and we definitely did need the half cent sales tax. As we know, those 100 positions that have been cut result in real cuts in services. We see our roads deteriorating, and our public amenities, particularly parks, are not improving. So we did need some infusion of additional money, but it's an opportunity to change our financial picture, and so we need to be very strategic about... our financial picture, and so we need to be very strategic about how we do that. We've got a seven-year window, and we need to take the best opportunity. A few things I hope that you all consider. We need to have a real public process for prioritizing the use of the sales tax funds and how we can shift things around in the most strategic way between the existing budget and the sales tax. So it's not just that money, but really is looking at big picture. So things like this Melrose extension or other big-ticket projects are really considered as part of the big picture. We need to be realistic about potential risks associated with sea level rise. We've got a workshop coming up on February 19th to look at that. We've got some public infrastructure that's at risk, property values along the coast. That is certainly going to be part of our picture moving forward. We need to be serious about addressing our jobs-housing ratio. We've given lip service to this for the last 20 years that I've lived here. We've had resolutions by the chamber. We have had policy discussion in this chamber, but we have not done what we need to. The EDE element that will be coming before you soon is an opportunity start to do that, to look at the sectors of this economy that need to be supported, including agriculture, and to take some real steps to address that job-housing ratio. We need to be updating our impact fees and keeping them current. Park impact fees are a big concern. Twice in the 20 years I've lived here, we've come forward with park impact fee adjustments, and they haven't gone up. That's why we don't have the improvements that we need. The current process to address them, I think, is about six months behind schedule. If we're going to be adding new programs like cannabis that increase our costs, we should be increasing the taxes and the fees to cover those costs. And being strategic about spending. Staff talked about carefully scrutinizing new positions. I remember when there was a grant writer, that person brought in at least four times their annual salary in grants to this city. So we need to be strategic about how we do that spending and improve that picture. We look at things like CCE as an opportunity to reduce our costs and to address climate change in a very cost-effective way. And last, we need to keep our promises, and one of those that many of us remember is 20 years for the swimming pool at El Corazon. We thought our children would benefit from it. I know you did, Peter, but now we're talking about our grandchildren. It's time. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Pretty much those were my concerns about this. Of course, we haven't updated our park impact fees, and there's a lot going on at El Corazon, and we ought, we ought to be taking advantage of that. We ought to be able to capture some funds for our park and talk about maintaining those park, those fees there at El Corazon. Jobs-to-residence ratio, something that we really need to, to step up. We, you know, we keep, we taught, we've done, come a long way in terms of, of, you know, tourism and a couple of, you know, we're, a couple of car lots, and we're also moving towards one more car lot, and, and we've gotten a lot in terms of hotel, TOT, but we need to do more. We need to have industry in Oceanside, jobs, businesses, and we seem to be, have been going the, you know, a downturn on, on businesses in Oceanside. We have some really great, great ones in terms of entrepreneurs and, and zero waste and restaurants, and that's really exciting, but we have not done more outside of the service sector. So we really need to really focus on that. And CCE, I, I really hope that we can finally, finally get ahead in terms of our, our, you know, our income, but also in terms of going green for Oceanside. So I'm going to move that we accept the forecast, I, but I do feel that we need to do extra, extra work right now, starting right now, to get those jobs into Oceanside so we have less people going on the, on the freeway, and, and we finally, finally have more money to spend in Oceanside and, and residents that are able to afford to live in Oceanside. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller?
Thank you. Jane, the 8.1 million of unfunded liability is, that, that is sitting in a pot is, I mean, not liability, but unfunded, what?
Is the reserves that you're talking to about? Yes.
Yeah. So that is not the same thing as the, the process we went through last year.
Oh, the section 115, no, they're separate funds.
So, and, and how much is, has that been earning money?
Actually, right now, it is below the 10 million corpus. That was initially because of the bonds that it is invested in, but if we hold it long enough, it will recover.
Yeah. Okay.
So we won't have a loss.
I, I know that, you know, that's going to be a priority for all of us to pay down the pension obligation, so. I second the motion. I, I am optimistic that we can still move forward in, as far as jobs-to-housing ratio, you can't be voting against, you know, major things that contribute to our bottom line all the time either. So we need to be focused on making sure what comes to us, we, we implement. So thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I also agree with the forecast. I look at the economy and I look at where interest rates have been and, and just the direction we're going, and as interest rates begin to rise nationally, property values have to do something. And so I know when we sat down and went over this, you did a very good job at preparing over the next five years for the, the loss that we may get from property values going down and not getting the, the property taxes. So I appreciate that. You know, I heard a comment about lip service for the last 20 years, and I'm here to tell you with this new council and 2020 lip service is over for Oceanside, you know, I want a council and a team with my colleagues here that have a vision, ideas, and a plan. You may have heard talk about bring more jobs, do this, do that, let's make more money, but where's the action? And so I'm excited to influence that action. I've been working diligently with the city manager and the finance director, and we're, we're looking at finding money. We're looking at ways to spend money more wisely, and it's going to take a team effort. It's going to take a lot of hard work, but we are, are in a new chapter, and we want to, we want to make Oceanside better. As far as jobs, you know, there's a lot tied to that. We definitely need more higher-paying jobs here in Oceanside, and we need more jobs in general. I, I agree with that, but there's a lot that has to take place infrastructure-wise as a city to connect not only City Hall, not only the school district, but also the business community. Big companies don't want to move to our city because of the state of our school district. High-income earners, high-paying jobs don't want to move to our city because of the state of our school district. So as a city, we have to come together, work with the school district and the business community, and start the conversation of how can we improve our local school district? Because that is a direct tie to the economic development. We cannot have a safer city. We cannot have more jobs. We cannot have the economic development without improving that. We have to grow together. So I just wanted to make mention of those, but again, I do support this five-year plan, and I'm excited to hit, hit the ground running in 2019. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. We'll go to item 16, Ms. Michael.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, attendees, and viewing public, my name is Kathy Nikle. I'm from Main Street Oceanside, and I am the Sunset Market Manager. I'm here to talk about a few things that Main Street has been working on. Tomorrow, we have our annual Authors Night at the Sunset Market from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. with over a dozen authors from all different genres to include our Veterans Writing Group out of our own Veterans Association, North County. The booth will be located at the southern end of the market across from the Regal Theater, and we do hope that you come down and visit our local authors. And then the first week in February, we will have our Public Safety Night, be held on February 7th with Oceanside Fire, Police, and Lifeguards joined by the Remembrance Project Historical Display about 9/11. They will be there with a full static display by all three departments of our City of Oceanside finest safety team with fire trucks, police command center, and a lot of different information on how you can be part of the safety team in Oceanside. And then in the second week in February, we will start off with our annual Valentine's Week festivities. I also wanted to bring up the Oceanside Mural Initiative. We have selected three top artists that will go to a community vote on February 12th from 6:00 to 12:00 p.m., located at 326 Horn Street, and we would like to invite our mayor and councilmembers, city manager, and community to come attend and vote for your favorite rendering. And then, of course, with the assistance of the Economic Development, City of Oceanside, Main Street Oceanside has done our building a stronger foundation for the downtown with our HowDoYouOceanside.com website, Facebook, Twitter, updates that you yourself can sign up for and find out what's going on in the downtown and find out about our progress concerning parking locations and construction via text message or email. So please sign up and find out what's going on in your downtown. Again, thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I'll see you again next month. Hope to see you downtown.
Thank you. Item 17?
The first speaker is Roger Davenport.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and then staff and all. My name is Roger Davenport, and I live in an all-electric, 100% solar home at 541 Crouch Street. I'm concerned because we're experiencing an increasing and accelerating effects of climate change locally and around the world, and I want to see our city move quickly and decisively to address them. So I'm very pleased that Oceanside has produced a draft climate action plan, and I strongly support that action. And although I haven't looked through it to digest all the details yet, I have a couple of initial comments. So you can see the paper there. First one is, I urge a commitment to 100% renewable energy for Oceanside. The state of California has one at 2045, a goal of 100%, and I'd suggest that we have ours well before that. In the draft cap, there's a 75% renewable goal by 2030, and that's laudable, but it's not really enough. Scientists agree that we have to stop using fossil fuels pretty soon and move to a renewable-based system, or else we're going to face some really serious problems with, even more serious problems with climate change. And the technologies are there. Solar and other technologies are available now to enable this. For example, residential solar is about 1/3 to 1/2 the cost of SDGNE. And other things we need to do, we can electrify homes, like I've done to our house, and require new homes to be all-electric, and by doing so, we can essentially eliminate natural gas use in the homes. All-electric solar homes are simpler, cheaper, and safer. We can also electrify our transportation to do local trips, and that can eliminate a large fraction of the fossil fuel usage for that. More than 100 cities in the U.S. have already committed to 100% renewables. Six of them have already met that goal. Oceanside needs to up our game. Also in support of that, I support implementing community choice energy in Oceanside as soon as possible. CCE is a tool that can help us move more quickly to 100% renewables and reduce greenhouse gas emissions while giving local control, saving money, and providing community benefits. Something I especially like about CCE is that the profits get returned to the community. They'll provide better incentives for residential and commercial solar projects, and they can become a funding source for local energy and efficiency projects. As you know, it's always hard to get funding for big projects, but take the example of Lancaster, whose clean energy, CCE, funded and built a 14, or 10-megawatt community solar power plant just a year and a half after they started operation, and they did it using local banks, local suppliers, local contractors and workers, so they directly benefited community businesses and residents. So local control, local power, and local benefits. It's a win-win-win all the way around. So I encourage the city to advance the cap through the public review process and to adopt and implement a strong and effective climate action plan for our city as soon as we can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Ken Leighton, Barbara Collins, and Cindy Davenport.
Hello, my name is Barbara Collins. I am a 20-year resident of Oceanside, and I live at 768 Porto Oral Court. I am here to give my support for a strong climate action plan also. It is an excellent vehicle for economic development and for smart growth. It is, it is a good thing that we have a draft climate action plan now, and so that's a very good development to move forward. The draft plan has a goal for Oceanside to reach 75% clean energy by 2030. I think we need to be more ambitious and have a 100% clean energy goal by 2035, which is what some of our big neighbors have adopted already, as in like the city of San Diego. Another key element of a good climate action plan is a strong push for community choice energy. California's energy market is rapidly changing now. SDGNE wants to get out of the buying and selling of electricity. SDGNE sees its future business plan as simply to be the distribution arm for electricity, which is exactly what its role would be if we adopt a CCE in Oceanside. So the path forward for Oceanside is really becoming clear. San Diego has recently announced that it is planning to form a CCE, and the feasibility study for Oceanside to join with our coastal neighbors is going to be released very soon. We need to choose local control and keeping more of the ratepayers' money here in our community to invest here and create good local jobs. Lastly, we need a broad stakeholders group with members of the business community, community organizations and residents of Oceanside, and environmental groups to work with the city, to help the city, to communicate these plans, and to implement a good climate action plan. So thank you very much for this opportunity, and good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, and staff. I'm Cindy Davenport at 541 Crouch Street, living in Oceanside since 2008. Yesterday, the Oceanside Economic Development Commission voted to approve and forward the draft climate action plan to you, the City Council, and so I look forward to you reading that carefully, and I also want to encourage everyone here, all residents, to attend the March 4th community workshop for the climate action plan. So again, everyone, keep that date in mind, and please study the climate action plan and make comments for this draft plan. Thank you very much.
Do you have the time?
Do you have the time, by the way?
I don't think it's been announced yet.
Okay.
Yeah, March 4th, but I don't think that the time has been announced yet.
Thank you.
Ken Leighton, South Oceanside. Speaking of high school graduation ceremonies at the bandshell, my parents, who passed away last year, both got their diplomas at the bandshell as Oceanside Carlsbad High grads of 47, excuse me, 47 and 51. For them and everyone else since, it was a memorable ceremony with a spectacular view, but they never said, "Boy, I sure hope they never upgrade that depression-era bandshell" or fix that horrible seating, very uncomfortable. This landmark directly in front of the Great New Hotel is a neglected city treasure that begs for a major upgrade. Perception: The bandshell is a protected historical landmark, but as Oceanside historian Kristy Hawthorne tells us, "The bandshell and its adjacent Beach Community Center," which is sort of a box-like gem, "have no designations on national or statewide historical registers." She admits these facilities need modernization as long as the process is done with public scrutiny and input, and as long as community events like Operation Appreciation, Race Across America, Iron Man, et cetera, still get to use it. Nowadays, the Beach Community Center is used mostly by five basketball players a day on average. And did you know that the bandshell seating are basically boards that were installed as platforms for seats that never came? Please envision the future of this long-ignored gem as it is the only beachfront concert venue in Southern California. I propose you create an ad hoc committee to explore the potential of attracting an outside entity like a casino or a concert company who would come in and pay to rebuild the bandshell into a state-of-the-art concert facility that could be used for concerts and off-Broadway-style plays. In exchange, that partner gets naming rights and a certain amount of concert dates per year for a specific time period. This breathtaking concert experience would leave Humphreys with its cheap folding plastic chairs and cramped seating in the dust. And just think of the ancillary boost Oceanside's image and existing businesses would get as major headliners come to town. Improvements to the Beach Community Center could be made at the same time as the bandshell gets improved as well. It's interesting to note that Oceanside has started, has become used increasingly by Hollywood, and it's time to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to step up and find many other ways to bring more income into the city. Thank you.
Next, we have Arlene Hammersmith and Mary Ellen Reese.
I am here tonight proudly speaking for Represent Oceanside members.
Can you make it a little louder?
Pardon?
I'm sorry, can you make it a little louder?
You can't hear it, can you? My mic is on. Stop the clock. Is that working? Is there a secret? Really close to the mic. Is that any better? Oh, my goodness. Okay, I lost three seconds. Council members, we can do better than the appointment process to fill the at-large council term. In the shared spirit of conducting an open and transparent appointment process for filling vacated elected city offices and commission positions with public access to all parts of the process, Represent Oceanside recommends the following. Right here, "An open, transparent appointment process fulfilling," what I just mentioned, "to all parts of the process. All documents related to the appointments to city vacancies of the council treasurer, city clerk, et cetera, are on the City of Oceanside website in a very public, easy-to-find, transparent method accessible to all members of the public. The process for the appointment includes all of the following: publicized vacancy and requests, lists of applicants updated daily, standard application form for all appointments, standard interview questions, resume and/or letter of qualifications required and attached as a part of the completed application form, which contains all of those. Elected positions specifically would be a little different. Evening city-hosted workshop, which is a Q&amp;A between candidates, public, and council. We need the public to be involved and know all of you. The city provides public input opportunity in an online format. Verified Oceanside voters make their preferred choices. The city clerk's office tabulates the electronic input and provides that to council and publishes the data on the appointments and data link." Thank you, Sally. Standard process for reducing the candidate pool to five or one-third of the applicants, whichever is smaller. This process is posted on the city website link for all appointments, so all of the public knows how it's going to go. The entire process of reducing the candidate pool takes place at the entire process, the city council meeting. At the city council meeting, decision-makers are given the report regarding public input, and when nominating to fill the vacated position, include the public input, publicly state their method of including that input and the data, and shares your evaluation and rationale for their final vote. So, finally, Represent Oceanside looks forward to the City of Oceanside becoming a leader in transparent governance. Damn. And no end runs on the Measure X Citizens Oversight Commission.
Please wrap it up.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your kind attention.
Hi, Mary Ellen Reese. Been in Oceanside since 1984 in South Oceanside, St. Malo Village, St. Helene Court. I fully support the Represent Oceanside plan. I think residents have a right to know not only how you vote, but why you make the decisions that you do. We live in a time when there is little reason to have faith in government. I'd like at least to have it start here. Transparency makes trust possible. So, when you guys vote on appointments, please post that vote on the webpage. Maybe we could have a webpage for just that function. And in addition, explain why you chose that candidate and refer back to the requirements that you posted for that appointment. Maybe not so standard, generic, where they all look alike. I mean, obviously, the ones for city council replacement would be the same, but the committees and commissions, maybe you could have specific requirements that you'd look for to fill those positions, depending on what they were doing. That's it, I guess. Just refer back to those posted requirements when you post why you selected the people that you did. So, thank you for considering that. Look forward to it. I think it would be wonderful. I'm thinking, who wouldn't want that? So, thank you.
The next speaker is Diane Bailey and John Botorff.
I'm a resident. I'm a business owner. I'm a property owner here in Oceanside forever. High school graduate and the whole thing. But what I want to talk about is Relay for Life in Oceanside. It happens at Mirko's to College. They've been doing it for 19 years, and Oceanside is the top relay in the whole county. Over the past 19 years, we've raised $1.6 million for cancer research and support. I'd like to say that we just did our kickoff for this upcoming year, which is April 6th and 7th. We are looking for teams. We're looking for business donors. We're looking for cancer survivors like myself, because we want to honor you. We want to honor your caregivers. Cancer research is leaps and bounds. We have a business here in Oceanside, Gentec, that is very big on research and development for cancer. And I just wanted to let the city know, and thank you for your time.
My name is John Botorff, and I've lived in Oceanside for about 15 years. I live on 517 Seagate. I want to talk about, like a lot of people, the draft climate action plan. As we all know, state of California has mandated municipalities to cut emissions, and the cap is a great way to do that. Like a lot of other people, I've looked at the draft cap, and it's a great place to start. We can definitely do better. I absolutely think we need to set a goal of 100% renewable energy. Over 90 cities in the U.S. already have done that. 10 counties have already done that. Several states have already done it. Several nations in the world have already set 100% renewable energy. We can absolutely do it. Technology exists. The CCE, also known as CCA, is a great way to achieve that goal. It meets the emission requirements. It saves the city money. It makes the city money. It just makes a lot of sense. Also, in the draft plan, talk about urban forestry cover. It's not very good. We need to increase the canopy cover, replace, remove trees, plant at least 200 trees annually. It increases so much oxygen, depletes the ozone, depletes the carbon dioxide, and it makes everyone a lot happier to have green in the world. Also, I didn't see anything there about amending zoning standards to accommodate mixed use, so people, to encourage people to walk and bike to their work and their shopping. Right now, Councilman Feller mentioned about, you know, we all drove here, because we don't really have any other choices. The way things, the way things are zoned, if you want to go shopping, you want to go to work, you have to drive. There's really very few places you can work, and you can shop and walk, everything like that. Along with that, there's a lot of money available out there from public and private sources. I think we should absolutely go and pursue a lot of that money. One of the things that I have covered here before is one way to meet that cap goal, cutting emissions, is no idling. Stopping idling in Oceanside would cut over 100,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide every year. That's almost, we're talking 10% of the target reduction, simply by getting people to stop idling. There's a lot of resources out there. Department of Energy, U.S. Department of Energy, EPA, No Idle California, Breathe Easy Utah, they all have free flyers, buttons, posters, all these resources that are available, and I'd be more than happy to meet with staff to go over all of this. I encourage the council to pass ordinances, initiate programs, use Green Oceanside. Make all this happen. Put it in the cap. Make it happen. You can target schools, daycares, preschools, businesses with drive-throughs, all those places where people are exposed to idling all the time. Put signs at parks and harbor and the beaches, because tourism, ecotourism is $77 billion a year. Let's tap into that. Put Oceanside on the map. Let's beat all these coastal cities to the punch. Oceanside made $350 million from tourism in 2017. Let's make that happen. Let's bring some more of that money in. Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to item 16, a request by Councilmember Rodriguez and Deputy Mayor Feller.
So, I was really excited to put this on the agenda as a council item, and I got my colleague's, Councilmember Feller's, support on this. It's time for Oceanside to stop being the wild, wild west when it comes to short-term vacation rentals. We're at a point now, with the hard work and due diligence of the city manager and the city attorney's office with the Good Neighbor Policy, as well as the upcoming finalization and last meeting of the ad hoc committee to get community feedback, we're in a position now, we're in a better position now, I should say, than we have ever been before. And so, I'm requesting a comprehensive short-term vacation rental program in consideration of the tax suggestions, the current STVR ad hoc committee recommendations and Good Neighbor Policy, with a 120-day staff to put together a comprehensive program, taking into consideration the Good Neighbor Policy, as well as the ad hoc committee's recommendations. That's very important, to ensure compliance and accountability that will allow for an influx of additional tax revenue, and more importantly, structure and relief to our local residents having issues and concerns surrounding short-term vacation rentals. And I go and I proceed to list some guidance and recommendations for staff. The most important, I think, on there is to really up our game as a city and negotiate a contractual agreement with the major platforms that market properties within our city. By controlling that contract, in those negotiations through the city attorney's office, we could require a list of, you know, potential property addresses. We can negotiate the requirement of the property before it's uploaded on their website, that they have to be licensed in our city. We could even attempt to negotiate the booking dates of those properties for audit purposes and accountability purposes, because right now, it's a Boy Scouts sort of honor on how the homeowners are completing the short-term vacation rental transient taxes. So, I'm excited to move forward on this. I think it's going to really bring in a lot of additional revenue that can fund a full-time code enforcement officer to deal with issues and complaints. And so, again, I'm excited to move on it, and I would like to make a motion to move forward on item number 18.
We have one public speaker, Linda Walshow.
I'll go ahead and second it. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Linda Walshow. I'm the Chair of the Oceanside Mobile Home Advisory Committee and the Vice Chair of the Oceanside Housing Commission. I'm here on the vacation rental issue because it is greatly impacting our mobile home parks right now. We have 16B, our rent stabilization ordinance, that is supposed to keep these homes available to the low-income families and our seniors on fixed incomes and our veterans and disabled. And unfortunately, not only are the park owners acquiring the homes and using them as vacation rentals for profit, but they're doing it by aggressively refusing to approve buyers for the homes, or taking other means to evict people from their homes in order to acquire the home for discounted rates. We've got that going on in several parks right now. Also, another property management company is being allowed to rent out homes in another park, which should be prohibited, considering that they're a third party and they're not entitled to do that. But the problem comes that you're not supposed to be entitled to rent control unless that is your primary residence. And I can go online on Craigslist and find you any number of parks that are renting out mobile homes as park rentals, vacation rental homes right now. And I'd cross-checked those space numbers in the parks with the city's data this year that was filed by the park owners to see how those homes were being reported, and they're just being reported as ordinary rent-controlled spaces. So, we've got, again, not reporting the tax issues if they own more than five. We don't know whether they do or not. We don't know whether they do or not. So, there's a problem as far as business licensing, there's a problem as far as every space that they acquire for this use is one space less that we have for our low-income families and seniors. So, I appreciate your time, and thank you for listening.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We actually have been working on this. In fact, we have an ad hoc committee of the Planning Commission that has been working on this. They have one more meeting this next, this coming Tuesday, which is January 29th at 3:00 p.m. here at the council chambers. These, this list is something that we've already, like I said, been looking at, including the funding of a code enforcement officer. What we are still looking at, though, and what we need more information, because I do believe that we need to have a balance. We need to have housing stock. We cannot allow full-flow commercialization of housing. That's not how our, you know, our neighborhoods were built. They're just not really fit to handle certain kinds of traffic. So, what the ad hoc committee is doing, I know that this is very, very difficult, is they're looking at perhaps caps on the number, geographic, you know, should it just be west of I-5, you know, limits, and grandfathering, those kind of things. So, I am really looking forward to the ad hoc committee recommendations. This is a bit redundant, but I'm actually really happy to see that Councilmember Rodriguez is getting on board on doing something with respect to, you know, having some regulations. Again, for me, it's a balancing. Of course, we do get some TOT, but we also lose housing, housing stock. So, how we're going to do this, I know San Diego, unfortunately, is being sued on their plan, so I think that, you know, it's difficult. I want to ensure that we maintain control as much as possible for registrations. The addresses, absolutely, we need to know that, and of course, we need to be able to do code enforcement. If somebody calls, we ought to be able to enforce our laws. So, I'm really, you know, looking forward to the ad hoc committee, the Planning Commission, you know, getting us this information, as well as staff. I really look forward to this. So, that's, that was my second. Thank you.
We will close with Councilmember Feller and then vote.
The reason I signed on was because I think, for one thing, this is great input for the ad hoc committee, if, if in fact, we approve the suggestions. I think money isn't everything it's nice to have, but the most important part of our effort to regulate VRBO and the way that that works is, first of all, we have some very conscientious people that take care of business, just like they're supposed to, every, every week. But you have, it's come on the market that there is so many, so many trying to get by and not follow regulations. And I think the most important part of this, at this point, is going to be assuring those that do have VRBO or Airbnb, however you want to word it, that they are, it's important for the city, and I think the regulations and accountability are the most important thing of the policy that we're going to direct going forward. So, I think it's very critical that we do that. I do have a name of a person that I would give to staff that contacted me over auditing and managing TOT tax collection, and it's, I guess, one of the ways to sneak through, and he's discovered this, and so staff maybe can contact him. I think it's, again, an important step. I don't want to step on the ad hoc committee's toes. I think going forward with this is, as suggestions to help them, because it's coming back to us at some point, and we're going to be able to vet it further. So, I, that's, that's why I felt this was important. So, thank you.
City Manager.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, as part of the backup to Councilmember Rodriguez's item, he would like this back in 120 days, so staff's going to attempt to schedule this at the May 22nd council meeting.
Thank you.
Is that enough time for the ad hoc committee to, and staff, to work on this?
It's a good question. It's going to be a little tight. It'll be a function of the public input, but we're going to aim to meet the 120 days.
Please vote.
Five oh.
Are there any general council member comments? Seeing none, then we'll...
We, one of our former employees lost his wife this past Friday, Mike Blessing, and she, it was a total accident, and Sandy was important in the school board and with many, many organizations involved in Oceanside. And Mike, of course, was over thirty-year employee for the city. So, I would mention that we should try to send our blessings in close, in a moment of silence.
We will do that. So, we will stand adjourned until 3:30 Wednesday, February 6th, if we could do a moment of silence for Sandy Blessing.